Meeting order, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I surrender.
[inaudible]
All in favor of the agenda?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Close motion carries. Minutes, the regular session held in the conference room at 6:00 PM on September 20th. Intertain a motion for approval of those minutes?
Surrender.
All in favor?
Yes.
Close motion carries.
The executive session in the conference room held at 6:58 PM on September 20th. Intertain a motion to approve those minutes?
Surrender.
All in favor?
Yes.
Close motion carries. Authorization for payment of bills. They have any questions on the bills? Intertain a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
Surrender.
Surrender.
All in favor?
Yes.
Close motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to administrator's report, elementary.
So, we had a homecoming week last week and it was great to have that fist bump parade again. Elementary kids were super excited about that because we, I think even the high schoolers were excited because that's something that we hadn't had for a while. So, it was nice to bring that back to get the band, the cheerleaders, the football players, softball players. That was just, you know, that sense of school community was huge. We also had our author visit from Stephen Cozen, third through sixth grade was a part of that and that was fantastic. He did a flash fiction writing with them and so what they did was they got about 25 minutes to kind of write their first beginnings of a story and what Mr. Cozen does is he goes through those and he will pick a student to work with to write a book with them. And then they will publish a book and go through the whole process of how to become an author and it's a really, really cool activity. And so, we've sent those to him, he'll start going through that, then he'll pick a person and then we'll have him, I don't know that he'll come back here to work with them, but he will work with the family and the child to write a book and publish a book of their own. So, he's published 12 books with Missouri students and he's done more than just that, but just 12 in Missouri. So, we got connected with him from Highland Elementary, they had had a student who got to publish a book there last year. So, that's how we got Mr. Cozen. So, that was a really cool experience for our kids. We also finished up our fundraiser and so we, let's see, every student, even if they didn't solicit any donations or anything, will receive two books and at most 10, depending upon the funds that they raised. But then also every classroom gets a new set of books and the library gets a new set of books pre-K through fifth grade to add to it. So, the fundraiser went very, very well. We had a lot of community support. Our kids worked super hard to raise funds as well. So, all in all, we had a fantastic fundraiser. So, the things that we have coming up, parent teacher conferences will be here next week, so we're excited for that. And then we'll also have our first activity night and that will take place in November. We haven't set a date for that yet, but that'll take place in November.
All right, middle school and high school, September 27th, the middle school had their first pep rally during the school day, so well since I've been around and it was fun. They announced, recognized all the football players, all the softball players, the cheerleaders, led it by Coach Shrag, Cheyenne Shrag, she's a cheer coach and she led it all. It was a lot of fun. Coach Miller competed in a minute to win a game, a minute to win a game against the, some of the other students and unfortunately he didn't come out victorious, but he did put it on a good show, so it was a lot of laughs and a good time for everybody. After that was the activity night, Mrs. Hamlin led that through middle school student council. Again, it was a good activ, it was another fun opportunity for our students to be at school, an extended school day and also taking some of the activities that their classmates are taking part in. So, they had pizza, then they played some games and then they went to the softball game or football game. They got to go to a little bit of both because we tried to play, we played on the night that had both home and middle school football. Middle school football and softball. So, that was a good opportunity for us to, you know, spend some time together. We also had homecoming for the high school, which we had the fist bump parade during that and Miss Llewellyn and Coach England, Mariah England, did an excellent job in planning that. Had a traditional inside pep rally on Thursday night, kind of go back to normal on that and then had a, just a great week of dress up and a lot of school spirit. So, it was fun to see the pictures again, the kids dressing up and having a good time. Mrs. Lisa Blake did an excellent job with her school spirit, one staff member that had the most spirits, so it was fun to see that up and going again. Coming up this week, tonight, going on right now was the powder puff, so that's, that's fun. I know we had a lot of boys that were excited to cheer and then we had some girls that were excited to go out there and compete, so unfortunately I'm missing that, but I'm sure they're having a good time. The end of the quarter is the 21st, this Friday, so a lot of kids are trying to get all, everything buttoned up for the end of the quarter and then we have parent teacher conferences as well on the 26th and 27th. So, we're trying to make sure that we have as much participation as possible, so communication and everything is very important right now and we've sent out several communications via Facebook. For activities, softball season came to a conclusion. They finished the season 12-9, which is a huge increase from last year. They finished third place in the Lewis and Clark Conference. Had several girls that earned honors this year. Abby Becker was second team all district, Bailey Bone was second team all district, third team all conference, Agnes Reel was first team all conference and district, Miranda Miller was first team all district, second team, or first team, sorry, first team all district, second team all conference, Bryston Miller was second team all district and then Jen Hinckel was first team all district and all conference. So, that was, they had a very successful season and it's great to see some of our students get some, some awards at the end of the season. Football is finishing, finishing up the regular season this week on Saturday, they're playing at 1:00 PM, they're playing Bishop LeBlanc and it is senior day. It'll be during the day, it's the 1:00 o'clock kickoff, so that's a little bit of a change, but it will be, it'd be fun to recognize those seniors who did a lot of good things for the team and have sacrificed a lot, so it'll be good to recognize them and get them back as well.
Just a couple of things, last week was a busy week. Our poor data, Moses for October was due as well as our tiered monitoring for our federal programs, so all of those were submitted successfully and that's a huge relief. Currently have a couple of grants that we are working on. I did submit one to the Office of Early Childhood, we were eligible because we expanded our preschool, so that's been submitted. They've asked for some follow-up data, just more itemized budget, so I'm working on getting that to them and then we'll find out in a month or so, I think, if we will be approved for that. So, it will help offset the cost of expanding that preschool program, which is very nice. And then Mrs. Vanoyer and I are going to work on a grant for some hydroponic stations and curriculum to go with that for the elementary, for each of the classrooms, so kind of excited about that and all that we could do, start growing some produce for our kitchen and staff and students, so. Curriculum writing is ongoing and as are the testing and referrals for special ed, so we've been busy.
All right, in case you missed it, echo livestreamed Senator Blunt's visit, which was Parents Day, Tuesday, Wednesday. Had a great visit, wanted to come visit some of the things that our students are doing and I kind of take it from his time here, he was here a little longer than he anticipated, but he enjoyed talking to the students and I think he was impressed with what they have been doing and so it was nice to, nice to have that. The EPA was supposed to be here Monday to do a story on some of our students' projects that they've seen in a magazine. They have a conflict, so they're going to reschedule that, so they will not be here on Monday. And then just last thing I have, been working on getting our site certified to be a bus train, driver training site, so we're getting closer. I do have the curriculum acquired and just waiting for the federal to do their part and giving me access to register our site. So, our school's been approved, we just have to register our site, so we're getting closer, so.
That it?
Yep.
Okay, move on to new business. Have no unfinished, oh, food service records, sorry.
The only difference on food service is updated numbers. I think the pre-K has kind of settled into the breakfast, it's not as chaotic as it was.
They do really, really well, even lunch, they're, we made a comment the other day that we need our big kids to watch our preschool and kindergarten because of how quiet they sit down to eat because everybody else needs some lessons.
Well, and she's made it fun with the different ways she's done with the food.
They had tie-dyed applesauce last week, they all thought that was great.
Something with the fruit.
Frozen grapes, golden jello, they loved that too, so that was a big highlight last week.
Okay, so unfinished business, there are no items, new business, one is LJ Hart.
All right, as I told you guys, LJ Hart administers our debt service and our bonds and we're at a point now where we can do a no tax increase, so and we're talking about doing some projects, I thought it'd be good to be educated on what our options are and so Tom Kozarkowitz is the president of LJ Hart and he's here to explain to you what our options are moving forward.
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm a little bit off, it's because I just ate a pork tenderloin sandwich at Lucky's and way too big, you know, it was down. So anyways, as, as Mr. Turgeon indicated, we're going to talk about the debt service fund and what you can accommodate as a, for a future no tax rate increase bond issue. I'm going to start with your existing situation first and then we'll get into April 2023 election. So, if you open up the booklet, the first loose handout is a draft underwriting agreement and this is required from a regulatory standpoint that we disclose we serve as your underwriter, not your financial advisor. Once the agreement is in place, I can give you advice on, on this particular transaction, but right now it's, it's high level, general terms. So, if we flip past the table of contents, there's a picture of our staff and the map of Missouri, everyone highlighted in yellow are the school districts that we work with in most cases on an annual basis. And then we have Roman numeral five is the history of financing. I got a couple more. So, the history of financings dates back to 2006, we've issued just over six and a half million of debt. So, your 2016 bonds actually refinanced your 2012 and the 2012 bonds refinanced 2007 and then we also had the 2.3 million of new money bonds voter approval in 2012 as well and then the, the lease in, in 2006. On the far right-hand side, you've been able to save just over 218,000 in interest expense through refinancing. All right, now, on to page one, first we look at your historical growth and assessed valuation. So, over the past five years, the average annual growth has been 3.54%. In the middle section, since periodic reassessment was implemented, it's 5.86%. Now, in my projections, I'm assuming 2% going forward in order to be conservative. On page two, we have the historical levies by fund. So, this year you have the $2.80 in the incidental, that's your general fund use for everyday expenditures essentially. Teachers fund, there's a zero there, but you transfer money from the incidental to the teachers' fund for salaries and benefits. Debt service fund with 20 cents and that can only be used to repay general obligation bonds, no other purpose. And then you have 90 cents in capital projects to fund those needs. Now, as, as you know, the capital projects levy can be moved by board action from, and back into the incidental fund if you choose to do so. But historically, looking at your levy, you've done a really good job of maintaining that level and in particular, the debt service fund, that 20 cent levy was implemented back in '07, '08 and you held true to that. On page three, we have the remaining payments on the 2016 bonds, they go all the way up to 2031. You have a million 415,000 left to pay. The interest rate under the coupon ranges from 1.4 to 2.3. So, under yield statistics, the third row, average coupon, 1.978%, so less than 2%. That's remarkable, you're not getting anywhere near that in, in today's market. So, on page four, this is the cash flow analysis just in the debt service fund. So, reading left to right, we have your assessed valuation by fiscal year and again, assuming 2% growth. And then the green shaded columns, we have the revenue from the 20 cent debt service levy and then we have state assessed revenue that's also generated. Let's see, last year you generated 68,315 and we keep that constant going, going forward. And then a bit of interest earnings in debt service fund, we're assuming 1% going forward. Dark green column is the total revenue, the light blue column is the, the payments on the bonds we just went through and then the purple column is the projected balance in the debt service account. So, if we go to the next page so we can see that better. The purple column again is your projected balance and then the blue column are the payments on your existing bonds. So, at the end of last year, June 30th, well, 2022, you had an ending balance of 210,914. And when we, when we set your, your tax rate, the 20 cents, we look two years out. So, this year's payment is 185,878 and then next year after that, 188,638. So, you already have, as of June 30th, this past June 30th, you had enough money in your debt service account to make this year's payment before the revenue even came in. And you're allowed to have around one and a quarter or one and a half times next year's payment in debt service. But when you look at that purple column, you can see how your balances continue to grow. And so, that's an indication that you're in a position to pay, start paying these bonds off quicker or pursue another bond issue without increasing the levy. So, then on page six, I ran the bonding capacity. We start with your assessed valuation at the top and we can pull in some state assessed valuation of almost 2.6 million, we add that up and multiply that times 15% to get your lawful bonding capacity of just over 12.4 million. Now, in the middle, we have to subtract off the debt that you have outstanding and then we can add back some of the cash. So, third row from the bottom, general obligation bonding capacity, 11,415,865. What you can do as a no tax rate increase without any other subsidy, and I'll get to that in a moment, is 1,550. I had originally projected earlier in the year about 1,850, but rates have come up so much that that's just not, it's not feasible anymore. We were looking at a bond issue last week for Columbia schools that has 6% coupon on it, so it's, it's significantly higher. Now, I, so let's first start with what we can accommodate with the, your current situation. On page seven, a sample repayment plan for 1,550 and we start principal in 2032, so we wrap around your existing debt and we go up to 2043, so 20 years. I have a 5% coupon. I know Columbia sold theirs at a higher coupon because they wanted a premium, they wanted more money upfront. Now, I think it, and I know in today's market, I can still get a 5% coupon. What scares me is after the Federal Reserve probably increases rates later this year, how, will this hold? So, I, I think I'm being conservative enough, but only, only time will tell. So, then once, on the far right-hand side are the, are the fiscal year payments, interest only for several years of 77,500 and then once principal kicks in, around 175,000 a year. On page eight, I don't want to get bogged down too much on, on premium bonds, but essentially at a 5% coupon in today's market, fourth column from the left-hand side, the yield to the investor is going to be between 4 and 4.5%. Essentially, in a rising interest rate environment, investor's going to pay you more money upfront for a higher coupon. So, in this particular case, under bid information, if we sold 1,550 of bonds, the investors would pay you a premium for that 5% of 47,321. That's money you can use to cover the cost of issuance and apply towards your project. But again, we don't need to get into that just yet until we're actually selling the bonds. All right, so what it would look like, sources and uses of funds on page nine, you know, we would sell 1,550, the re-offering premium of about 47,000 would come in, we would deposit to your construction fund, 1,564,471 and then we have a breakdown of the total cost of issuance of 32,850, all right? More importantly, the cash flow analysis on page 10. Everything on the left-hand side with the green shaded columns remains the same. Then in the blue, I've added under schedule two, the new plan. So, let's go to the next page. We look at those balances in the purple column in relation to your payments. It starts to get tight when I look in 2026 through 2029, 30 timeframe, your balances fall below your payments, you're not deficit spending because that's the balance as of June 30th, but you don't have a whole lot in reserve. So, that's why I would be reluctant to go much above, if at all, the 1,550 with just the 20 cents. Now, if you grow above 2%, certainly this will change the, the outcome and balances would be higher, but I'd rather err on the side of being conservative. Any questions thus far? And the last item I have on page 12, and this is somewhat of an arbitrary number, but give you an idea of what you can do, I ran a bond issue for 2,250,000, same structure, principal from 2032 to 43. Let's jump forward to page 14. In the middle, under uses of funds, for construction purposes, you would have about 2,276,000 for construction. I added that to page 15, so let's go ahead and look at page six, whoa, no, actually I need to focus on page 15. So, on the left-hand side, the green shaded columns, under classroom trust fund money, I added five years of 50,000. Right now, at least for the last fiscal year, you're funneling most of your classroom trust into capital projects. Has that historically been the case or is it most of it stay in incidental?
No, usually, we've done that to try and plan for some projects. Usually it goes into fund one.
Okay.
But yeah, this year, as a matter of fact, we went back to putting it in the fund one just because the 90 cents is generating quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. So. So, you get, so with this, there is a way, I guess my point, if you feel comfortable within your budget to allocate 50,000 of classroom trust for five years to debt service, that helps, that subsidizes the 20 cents and makes it work. So, maybe you need more, a larger bond issue, well, just know you have to put more classroom trust or slightly less, you can scale it back. But there is a way to bond for more and make it work. And then once you, if you do move some of that 90 cents from capital projects back to op, the incidental fund, you know, maybe that frees up the classroom trust fund money. So, on page 16, with the subsidy going in debt service, your balances and the debt service contract nicely with your payments nearly throughout the entire financing.
So, I'll just make a couple of comments. This becomes key when we look at the projects that we want to do. Obviously, we have about, roughly about $2 million to work with now that we have been able to funnel into fund four with the SFR money that we've received. But when we look at the projects as a committee, it's like, wow, $2 million really doesn't go that far and the projects we want to do. So, being able to do a no tax increase bond issue really increases the number of projects that we can do and I know Plangers is going to talk about some of the projects here in a little bit. My, my biggest thing here is the debt service levy is kind of what's kept our building in shape, you know? People comment about how nice our building is. So, the importance of extending that levy is, you know, 20, 30, 40 years from now, having that revenue source and we're able to upkeep the facilities and add programs, you know, with facilities that are suitable to those programs. So, it's really important. Don't know where the wind turbines are going, but if the wind turbines come around, it's not a permanent revenue source and if we let this expire, from what I hear from school districts around, it's hard to, I've seen school districts, it's, it's hard to get that back. So, I think this is a golden opportunity to get some projects done. It, it means we have to do some heavy lifting and run a bond issue in April, but I think it'd be worth it and allows to do some projects that really kind of help out and some of those projects we have to do, you know, replacing the windows in the elementary, the drop ceilings, you know, more energy efficient lighting and we'll talk about that here in a little bit. The classroom trust fund is something that I'm comfortable saying $50,000 to add to it, that adds quite a bit. But I think that also tails into with what projects do we decide to do, do we need that 50,000 in there and I think that's a conversation, but it's, you know, time. And I think that's a conversation, but it's, you know, time is against us. If if we want to do bond issue in April, we have to make some decisions as to what direction we're going. So I'm advocating that we run a bond issue in April and then we can kind of decide based on the projects we want to do, if we want to add fifty thousand from, and maybe it's less than fifty thousand, maybe we don't need that much. But that's why I thought it'd be great for Tom to come speak to you guys because I think this is important information when we're talking about the future of the school.
What would be the effect of, let's say, I think you had in here, five years of adding the fifty thousand if we did seven years? Or stayed at five years and did seventy-five or a hundred? I mean, is that is it is it kind of a linear correlation, one for one, as far as then what the size of a bond issue could be?
I'm trying to think if there's a, yeah, a short way for me to figure that out, figure that out. Obviously, it it would go up. So we went up, what, seven hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand, two fifty? Yeah, I I guess that would. I wish I had a good answer for it, but I mean, that, I guess we can work backwards. Let's figure out what what the district is comfortable with, and then certainly I can run a bunch of different scenarios.
Okay.
My mind is going, I I know there's a shortcut to figuring this out.
I started to try to figure it out, and I thought, yes, that's a good.
Yeah, a lot of it's gonna. If I only had one bond issue outstanding, I think it would be easier, but not, you know, I'm working with two different ones. We can also think of, actually, I can look at. Because it's just over the next several years, two thousand thirty through two thousand thirty-one, while the existing debts outstanding, that you have some cash flow issues. So you won't be able to go too much above, I'm going to go to my cheat sheet here, payments of, let's say, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So if I had said two hundred and seventy-five thousand, four percent, one hundred years. Three point six million. Yeah, I think I can get closer to three and a half million if we can stretch out. And i- if we look at page fifteen, and I'm looking at the dark green column in the middle. So total revenue, let's look in in two thousand twenty-seven, twenty, after the Classroom Trust Fund, where where I ceased the fifty thousand, total revenue is two hundred and forty-four thousand. If you can commit to a short, to get total revenue up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand each of those years, that'll get you closer to three and a half million.
Good. Makes sense.
Don't quote me on that though.
I wrote it down.
That's something you can work those figures out and get to.
Let me, let me, let me draw that back because that was, I was under four percent columns. And see, that's where I run the rest of. Yeah. So now it's down to about three point three. So conservative, three million two hundred fifty thousand.
Anything else?
So, yes, just real quick question, or we, are you guys on the same page as I am that we need to run a bond issue in April?
Yep.
Okay.
I think a bond issue.
Yep, and then I can get the details from him and kind of look at our finances and kind of look at our revenue stream and make sure that I'm comfortable with the fifty thousand, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to come back up and talk election strategy once we get to that point. Sample ballot, we'll draft a resolution for you, and the filing deadline is January twenty-fourth.
So it's not the same as board candidate filing deadline?
No.
Oh, okay.
Because that's now in December.
Gives us a little more time?
It does, it does. I I would recommend having it, everything approved, at least by December, and you start the year fresh and get getting your campaign organized.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. This, I'm going to leave execution when you get to that point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
We'll move on to number two, which is master facilities plan presentation.
Okay, so if you remember, I can't remember what month it was, but we decided to hire Plainers to put a master facilities plan together. So we'd have a starting point to figure out what what are projects caused and what are we looking, what can we do? So you guys, this is Joe Knuckle.
Yeah, Stephanie Cross. She got married, so her last name got way easier. Super helpful.
Thanks.
Can I have one of those?
Oh, sure.
So while they're doing that, so on this, this would be a board action next month?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll dive into this. So first off, thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this master plan. We made a lot of progress working with the Facility Steering Committee. We've compiled what we have into this master plan, but this is a very malleable document. There's will be changes to this, so nothing is set in stone, but it is a moment in time where we capture the thoughts and concerns of the Facility Commitment Committee regarding the projects that you could pursue or would pursue here in the near future. So I'm going to start at page eleven. The the first few pages are a lot of background, kind of, you you look at those at, you know, at your own leisure. They're well-written and they do have good information in them, but the meat of this really starts at page eleven. Here, if you look at the process, we are now at the purple box, so that is, we are at the final report stage. So this is the final report. Although, if you find that you have a major adjustment to this, we can, we can edit a couple of pages and 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 clean it up. But we'll do that once. So that that is something that may happen because there are some things here that you may discuss and you would want to change and have it documented in the final report slightly different than what we show. Page twelve is the project overview list. These are color-coded by where the project is located. So you can see there, we started with early childhood, elementary, high school. The light blue kind of just are a variety of all district projects, didn't really fit into a category. And then the light yellow are site projects, which also are subcategorized into general elementary or athletics. So those are the projects that have made the list of projects. As you move through this document, each project then has a description, some of the key considerations and a cost associated with that. So you'll find more information on each project as we walk through this, but that is the the full list if you're looking for it. If you go to page fourteen and fifteen, this is just a little bit of the journey that the Facility Committee has taken to come up with a concept plan. What we did is we looked at a connected plan and an open plan of how we would position new additions on your campus. So one of the constraints that you have is is the availability of real estate or or area that you can connect a building to without, you know, affecting an athletic facility or a geothermal field or a parking lot or the nice view you have of your facility from Highway Six. So you have, you there's, you limit yourself on where you want to locate buildings. So we looked at some options of, you know, do we keep everything connected? Do we take some buildings and, you know, move them towards the back of the campus and and separate them? And what we ended up with was a connected plan to keep it tight, and you will find that plan on seventeen, page seventeen. So the highlights of this plan would be to move the tennis courts out front. Then B, item B would be your early childhood that ideally would be located near your elementary school, and that is the real estate available to do an addition for early childhood. C and D, that would be your, a new gymnasium and locker room. It was decided those would be ideal towards the back of the campus. We found that if we tried to keep the middle school where it was, it pushed those pretty far north and really pinched off the 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 rest of the the use of like the football field and even any parking back there, getting people back there. So we would recommend if you pursue putting the gym where the middle school is, that you, you know, you didn't have to move the middle school, which is item I, which would then would locate that closer to the cafeteria. It would give it its dedicated hallway like it is now, it would have its own identity and space for those kids. But, you know, we could move it towards the front of the building, which would be nice to move it from kind of the back of the building, like out of the way and bring them up to the to the front. E and F could be where, if you wanted to pursue a fine arts building, some type of theater that had fixed seating. That could be in E and F. That would also work well with where the music room is located, and we could use the existing stage, get get converted into storage. So there are some other advantages of locating it there, not to mention you would share the lobby space and the restrooms with the large gymnasium. G and H, well, we'll just start with G, G would be potential weight room location. This is one of the items that you is very high on your needs list. If we wait to put that in with the gymnasium, it may be some time before you could build that. If you kind of work that into an industrial tech addition, you could possibly build something sooner. And you could even set that up where you could phase that space into industrial tech, and then if you did build a gym, you could put the weight room there. The spaces, I've seen many schools where an industrial-type space got converted to a weight room as industrial tech fall off. You guys are turning the other way where you need more space for industrial tech. But it it, you know, you really just need a shell space, you don't need a lot of nice finishes, so the spaces actually work well for that. So that is the overall plan here. In this plan, we left the bus barn. Moving the bus barn incurs some cost, so does moving to middle school. So some of the things we flushed out through this plan is that to build a large addition like a gymnasium, it feels like you have to move something. And, you know, further investigation, we could try to work around that. But optimal layouts for flow, traffic flow, parking flow, it feels like you want to move something to really make it work well. L and K are your facts, improvements to your your family and consumer science area, and then K would be your secure entrances. Eighteen is inspirational images for those types of spaces just from, you know, other projects that we see out there in the industry and and, you know, what we'd be trying to accomplish with some of these spaces. And just trying to show that we want a high-quality spaces, high-quality learning environments for kids to excel in. If you go to page twenty and twenty-one, we get to have a little fun. This would be if we opened the Clear Story up in the cafeteria in the library. So this would return this to the original design concept of the space. There are QR codes here in the lower right, so if you're, you know, if you have a QR scanner on your phone, you can click that, and then when you move around, you can actually, it will move with you and you can see the space, how it moves. So it's a, one of the fun things we can do with the new programs they have for designing buildings. But you can see that natural light infiltrating these spaces really give it a more open feel and a more inviting feel. And so it would be, it'd be very neat to see that restored to the original design concept. We go to twenty-two and twenty-three, we see the fax, potential Family and Consumer Science Culinary Arts Program. So we would have an area that would be set up more like an industrial kitchen for students to learn how to do, you know, cook in that type of environment. And then we'd also have a presentation lab where they could do different type of productions. So this could be some type of of video work to showcase some of their work in culinary arts programs. So it'd be really exciting to see that space converted into that use. If you've been in there, it would be a, quite the improvement. Twenty-four and twenty-five would be the secure entrance. So here you could see that if you come, the, you know, the front doors, you would end up with, it was a build-out on each side of it. One side would be the the new high school office with a secure window. We we didn't, it doesn't show a window in there, but there would be a secure window in there. And this, we can work through how much glass you'd want or no glass. There's a lot of options here. Different schools have different opinions on visibility and sightlines. But in the the end goal would be to, when you enter the vestibule, that you would be able to go no further until you connect with somebody in either the high school office or the central office. So the central office would be to your left as you approach the the main entrance, so. So then, from there, we move on to a description, twenty, starting at page twenty-six, because you have descriptions for every project, key elements, some of the steps to actualization. There there are more of a, you know, you may want to consider this, that, you know, some projects should maybe be done in conjunction with another project or, you know, maybe there's just, you know, something special that you may want to consider if you look at a project, and then the estimated cost. So talking through estimated costs, that's where we handed out another sheet for you. So this sheet here is is from an industry magazine. So this is twenty-twenty-one data of costs that were compiled nationwide costs for for different facilities. You can see in the education row, you've got, education is actually one of the lower-cost items, which is good for you, but it's still not good because you can see that most of these are three hundred dollars a square foot, and that was in twenty-twenty-one. If you move over to a couple to the right, you can see a gymnasium is four, four hundred dollars a square foot. You can see something like a performing arts center, they have those clear up at eight hundred and ninety dollars a square foot. That would be very high-end, but you can see that costs have definitely escalated. If you remember back when you used to be able to build a house for under a hundred fifty dollars a square foot. We're in a different arena now. So I've also taken the time to look at my recent school projects that I was part of and compile some of the data from those. And this will show you how much things can fluctuate. And what we have to do in this is just pick a baseline level. But I want to show you this because there are, there are a lot of movement in what we can do through design. So right now, we're working with Hallsville on an eighth classroom addition that will be a storm shelter. They are working with S M Wilson on that, S M Wilson. S M Wilson is providing budgetary numbers. I think they will enter a guaranteed maximum price type situation. That's with a construction management group on that project. And the price right now is looking at $400 a square foot for that. And so that is the most current information I have on building something in the school market. The workforce development center, that bid in July of 2022. The new addition there ran at $360 a square foot and we had pretty aggressive bidding on that. We had a good bidding climate, a lot of bidders. So I feel that that is a good baseline number. I feel like 360 would be a good number to, to start with today. So if we project that forward, I'm saying 400 is what we use per square foot for a school building, construction project. And if it was something less complex, like just an industrial arts building that didn't have as many finishes, I pulled that back to 350. But you can see there's another couple of numbers in here. Meadville Bus Barn, we did quite efficiently. That is wood frame, so that's a post-frame structure. It is insulated. It does have metal panel on the inside. And it is quite large. It's a hundred and thirty by sixty foot building roughly. And that came in at $146 a square foot. But that has very limited power. It's really just lights and place for them to pull the buses into. So that's as simple as it can get. I mean, I can't get any simpler than that. But it does show you that there is still ways to do something. Like if you wanted a very basic wrestling room that was just a standalone building and you were fine with it being a wood structure, you could do it. So some of, that's where some of these items are tricky because we don't know if a wrestling room is going to be part of a gymnasium, which is running at $400 a square foot, or if that wrestling room is going to be maybe a building that's more, you know, is simplified.
And we're not building a wrestling room.
Oh, my bad, wavering. I don't know why I got wrestling rooms on my brain. Yeah, yeah, if you want a wrestling room, we could add to the list. Sorry about that. Eastern Valley Classroom Edition, this is one that we worked backwards into. So this is another way we can work into the project. So this was basically the school district expanded their early childhood program and they absolutely had to have two classrooms. And they had $1 million to spend. So we worked backwards into that and we ended up just having to build them as shell and they finished out the inside because they could afford a shell. And if you took all the finishes out of a general contractor's price, it dropped it a lot, very, you know, pretty significantly. So we ended up at 214 for that addition, that bid late last year. So that is, you know, there are ways if we try to, you know, get creative to work into a number that are, you know, are possible. But you can also see that we have also seen the high numbers. So Abington Avon, that's in Illinois. We have projects there that hit the $400 a square foot. So, so I've just, I, I bring this up to show you that the market is tricky. We will work with you to try to maximize your dollars and get the most out of it. That is what we want from you. And, and we know you have limited funds and so that's what we're going to try to do. So with that, is I, we, there is a spreadsheet, Andy Turgeon has it. He can share it with you that will help you select box, select projects and put them into a funding category. And then it will tabulate the cost of those. And what I would recommend is that you generate the list of projects that you would want to fund. We basically put three funding sources out there on that spreadsheet. We said, let's say we spend out fund balances. Let's say we do a geo bond. And then let's say we have the wind turbines come in. I would recommend take your first group of money and look at the projects that prioritize them and look at the projects you want to do and then almost have two alternates sitting there. You know, we want, we can do these, these fit into budget. We got two outliers we really like to do. And then I would recommend working with your design team to try to get those into that, worked into that, that, you know, that fund and do it that way. Because I think the numbers we have are conservative. I think you could find through good planning, refining scope of each project, you could, you could get a little more done than what we have projected. But again, we don't want to mislead you and give you too low a number and then it gets very tricky if you, you know, do a geo bond and then you can't afford what you plan on doing. We don't want to put you in that position either. Any questions on the projects, I'd be happy to answer. There's just a lot to go through here. And I, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. And Andy, if you have any, you know, feedback for us on anything that, that we can do to assist you as you move forward, just let us know. We're, we're a resource to help, you know, steer you in the right direction, make good decisions with your mon, you know, with your money and your projects moving forward. So like I said, pleasure working with you guys. I'll take questions if you have.
Just real quick, you know, when we did this, we just, we wanted everybody's input. So the wish lists just kept growing and growing. And everything from repairing chain link fence to building a fine arts building. So there's a lot of stuff on there. When you look at, and I'm getting ready to send you this spreadsheet. When you look at it, there's a column on there. The first column, if you put an X in that box, it totals up the amount at the bottom. So the first column is the $2 million that we, we will have in fund balances for Fund Four from S R Three money. The second column is if we pass a bond issue. If we decide to not put the 50,000 in classroom trust fund, then you just keep putting X's until you get to that 1.5 million. And if you do the 50,000, then you put X's until you get to that two point, roughly $2 million. So giving you 4.2 million. So we've done this exercise with the steering committee. And there's, and so I made a list because I sent out a, a Google form with the projects on there to see what everybody's priorities were. And so like the ones that came up at the top so far, and only seven people responded. But the elementary windows, they leak and they're not energy efficient. The high school plaster is having issues. It's crumbling because there's moisture getting behind there. And so it needs, the walls need to be insulated. The drop ceilings, if you walk down the high school wings, the drop ceilings have been there forever and just really, the whole grid needs to be replaced. LED lighting will improve the efficiency of the lighting. And in the same process down the road, it's going to save the school districts some money. Those were the top four. The kitchen enclosure, that's, we're having issues with birds getting back there behind the kitchen and we have to address that. The other issue we have is when the humidity is really high, our units seize up because it's not temperature controlled. So that would be enclosing that whole area and also our freezers. If you walk in there right now, they're just too small for what we do. Freezer and walk-in cooler. So that, that to me is a high priority and so is everything else I mentioned. Then you get into things that would be nice. So the next thing that to me is a high priority is the front entrance. And that would be expanding the central office and next to the culinary arts building to attach it to the current vestibule. The problem we have right now is people walk in those doors and if we buzz them in, unless we get out of our chair to see where they go, they can wander the building. And it's not been, but it could become a problem. And it's something that's always driven us nuts to be nice. They want, like you see in those pictures, they walk in that vestibule. Window on the left is the high school. Window on the right, central office, what do you need? And then we're right there, it will be efficient. In that process, then we can move our counseling office to where the high school is and then allow Mrs. Hushdeman to have more classroom space. Right now we don't really have a good place for our sewing classroom and that's becoming a popular thing with the students. So then we could use that space. So it would turn, it would turn that space into. So when I look at these projects, and I know a lot of people on the committee the same way, number one, efficiency, safety. Is this like, you know, the windows aren't, we have to do that. We have to do something about the lighting. But like then, then it turns into, does this project enhance the quality of our education? And I think as you look at this spreadsheet and play with it and you get an idea, so the first column you're trying to hit close to 2 million and the second column you're trying to hit 1.5 or 2.2. And it kind of gives you an idea, okay, these are the things we can do. Building a gymnasium's not going to land in that, in that pocket. Neither is early childhood building, neither is the fine arts building, which was my thing. I thought it'd be cool. But anyways, those are things that we consider down the road. If the turbines come through, then we have a conversation about what's next. So just wanted to, it's been great. And, and I also want to, you know, when we look at these prices, I'm going back to 2012, so if I'm wrong, correct me. But we worked with Plingers in 2012. And some of you guys that were here, remember we had this long list of items. And when you looked at the estimated prices, like we're only going to get these things done. Well, because the bidding climate was really good. And then that's one thing about this process that we're going to have to decide, are we going to go with something where we have the ability to choose the contractors and say, this is what we want? Because we did that with Plingers last time and we were able to save so much money because the bidding climate was really well, that our whole wish list of things, aside from paving the parking lot and doing the landscaping, everything else pretty much got knocked off that list. And it was just amazing. So when you look at the prices, don't get freaked out. Look at it as, okay, this is a good starting place. It gives us an idea of this is, you know, kind of what we could afford to do. Now if it comes in better, okay, let's throw this in here and let's throw that in there. So keep that in mind when you're, when you're looking at that. But I think it's, I think it's well laid out and a great tool to start working from. And so I'll, I'll share all of this with all of you guys so that you guys can have it.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, thank you very much.
And I just didn't get all, all of you guys that spreadsheet. So just play with it. You're not going to hurt anything. You mess it up, I'll send you another copy.
Send you a fresh start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to slide out.
Thank you all, thanks so much. Do you have some extra of those?
Sure do.
Well, and be nice, like a lot of committee members aren't here, so.
Really nice.
I've got, I've got this one too. Here, obviously all three of these. I'm just going to get these papers as well. There we go. There you go.
Move on to Program and Services Evaluation Reports, Staff Retention and Development.
All right, so I'll start it off and I'll let the principals and jump in if they want to. So we've added a couple of Program and Services Evaluations Reports because they're tied to our strategic plan and this is a great way for us to revisit our strategic plan every month. And I know Becky Barnhill was so excited when I told her she had to present to the board, so it was worth it. So, so one of the, two of the ones we've added is the two that you're getting presented to tonight. Staff retention and development is obviously one of our focus in our strategic plan. And so this is the first time we've created this report. You can see on the report that it's got the goals and the objectives that are in our strategic plan. And then it tells you who is in charge of evaluating the criteria to see if we're meeting those goals and objectives. So what I'm going to spend some time on is talk about our successes in those areas and then what we need to do to continue to improve our process. So I went back and did some analyzing for our success of our program because we went through a five-year stretch where we were at 22% teacher turnover rate and that is huge. So you go back and you look and 90% of those that left weren't from here and moved back home. A large percentage of those teachers were from, like a lot of them from Truman or from local colleges, taught for us for a year or two and then went, moved back home. So it's had a drastic impact, but I will tell you this. So in 2018, well, from 2017 to 2019, those two years, we had a 14% teacher turnover. 1920, it was 12%. And the last two years have been 10%. Now prior to the 1718, we were at 19% for five years on average. And one year it got up to 24%. So that was huge. When you're replacing almost a quarter of your staff, it's hard to build consistency in, in some of the programs and some of the things that you do. So those are the successes. I will also mention successes of some of the programs that we implemented and put in place. We have our Grow Your Own Teachers. So we do, in the summertime, students are hired to be assistants to teachers that teach summer school. We also have a partnership with Culver where we start teaching dual credit education classes to get them excited about teaching. And another thing that I think has helped the program is because of what we offer here at school, we find that a lot of our students like the environment here at school and are going into teaching and coming back as teachers. And I will share, I think I put it on here. What percent?
Forty.
Forty percent of our staff are alumni. That is great. And that's, that's going to continue to climb. And that's where our strengths at. We have some talented students. We can get them excited about school and come back. Then we're not going to be hiring students that aren't from here and that want to move back home. So now, when we talk about what's needed moving forward, we have to keep working on that. We have to keep growing that workforce. We have to keep encouraging teachers to come back, students to come back as teachers. But we also have to work to develop the teachers that we have and make it to where they don't want to leave. So those are some of the things we're going to keep on working on. Professional development, we have conversations about that all the time. How do we, you know, when you, you pull everybody in a room and do professional development together, invariably it's going to, one or two people, maybe more in the room are like, this doesn't apply to me and, and basically you're wasting their time. And it's hard to do, but that's one of the things we're trying to do more and more is how do we customize the professional development so it's beneficial to everybody and, and kind of what they need. And it's hard to do, but that's something we have a lot of conversations of. So that's something we're going to keep working on is improving professional development. Of course, Mrs. Barnhill plays a huge role in that. We're successful with what we're doing because of how she impacts the teachers that we have. Not only teachers that have been here for a long time and she visits with them on a regular basis and gives them opportunities to ideas on how they can engage the students. But the training that she does with the new staff from the fourth school starts to during the school year. has been, has been a huge benefit in keeping our staff here. So those are the, those are the things we're going to keep focusing on moving forward. How we're going to measure this is with our numbers. And hopefully, we get below 10% with our teacher retention. And, you know, every year, we're not having to hire a lot of new staff. And we can get some consistence, consistency going. You guys have anything to add?
No, I think you summed it up really well. I mean, an important part is working to develop teachers that we have. Because, you know, when we do have openings, we don't always have a lot of applicants, you know? And so when we have teachers who, you know, who ask questions, just reaching out and saying, okay, hey, we're here to work with you, we're going to get you what you need, we're going to get you the support. If we can't find it inside, we're going, we'll go outside, and we will help you, to mold you to be the teacher that we need.
At the middle school and high school level, a lot of that, they're in charge of departments. So given the autonomy and the support to be able to take these projects and really run with them. I mean, you kind of see that in, well, pretty much everywhere that, on the outside, especially with the Bus Cafe, and the Business Department, the FACS program. And we're starting to see a lot of those programs really starting to develop. Teachers that enjoy their job, teachers that are able to go out there and, and create things, and are part of that bigger piece, really feel like they're a part of, you know, of, of the school and this community. I think that's really where we're starting to get that, that, that retention piece. It's really strong because they're able to be a piece of this, and really start to help it grow. So it's, they're part of something bigger than themselves. And I think that's what we all want, is to make a difference.
You know, it's some other things we haven't talked about that we've done, that's on the report, is we think about mental health and where it's at now, and all the things, you know, like, you know, adding the career advisor, and being able to have more counseling for our students, and adding an assistant principal to be able to work with the students, you know? That is also supporting the teachers. And that also plays a role in, in teacher retention and development. So we're doing great things, and, and we're just going to keep working at it until.
So on this 14%, 12%, 10%, when did the four-day school week hit and all that? You know, did we lose a lot to the neighboring schools that went to four-day week? So does that affect these percentages, I guess, is what I'm asking?
We did, we did lose some to Skyler when they first went. And then we lost some applicants that decided to go to those four-day school weeks. But then we bumped up our pay. And that became, that became a, a big factor. But then the governor came out and said, we'll do this grant. So now everybody kind of caught up to us almost. So my argument this year is going to be. Well, they're saying they want to do it again. So my argument, and I'm talking to larger schools, I'm talking to schools that are in the same boat we're in, we're not getting any money out of this. So what are you doing for our schools? We worked hard to get to be, we're, we're competitive with four-day school weeks because of our salary. What are you going to do for us? And, and that's legitimate. I've been talking to legislators already about that. And I'm trying to get, you got St. Louis, Kansas City, Columbia, Springfield, all those schools. I was talking to Paul Meyer about it, they're in the same boat. Kirksville's in the same boat. If they're going to run this grant, say, hey, we'll help you get to 38, that doesn't do anything for our students. And so there's got to be a solution where we get some money as well. Because we'd like to go higher than 40. So that we can compete with four-day school weeks. But that was a good question. Yep.
Move on to learning.
Wait. She was getting excited.
No, I didn't skip that one.
Can you share it with me? I think I can screen share.
Yes, I will, I'll airdrop it to you.
Okay.
And you're going to have to run it for me then?
Not a problem.
I think I airdropped it to your iPad on accident.
Oh, I got it on the other one too.
Shivering down here, I can hear it too. It's pretty good to me.
Yeah, because you're the one that's going to get it first.
There, look at me.
So that's the last slide, though.
Is that the first slide?
No, the first slide is this slide. Which doesn't noise anything. Okay, so I just made a quick presentation, kind of about what the learning, like, what my, what I do in my job, and kind of the programs that I help with. And then just kind of summing up what, kind of what I do throughout the school year. So go to the next slide. So just about my program, so a few things that I do, and I know Mr. Turgent's already talked about this, but new teachers especially, I train new teachers in July. And we kind of started that when I come into this role four years ago. Because it kind of is daunting for new teachers to come into a one-to-one school. So we want to prepare them to have the devices in their hands, and get familiar with them before they actually come and teach. So I train them in the summer. And then admin allows me to pull out first and second-year teachers one, one half a day a month. And I train them differently. Like with first-year teachers, I just train them on the devices, like how to use them. As adults, if we don't know how to use a device, we're probably not going to have our students use them, because we're scared of them. Our students are not, but as adults, we kind of are. So that's what I do for first-year teachers. And I do kind of talk about, like, why we use technology, and how it impacts learning, and how it makes kids more creative. So that's what I do for first-year teachers. And for second-year teachers, we talk a little bit more about Apple technology, and how to kind of impact the students on a deeper level. So moving and using the device to increase creativity even more, and how they can collaborate, and how they can use critical thinking. So that's kind of how I train first and second-year teachers. And then third-year plus teachers, I try to meet with them monthly, and we just kind of talk about upcoming lessons. And I will help with collaboration projects, that I'll talk about briefly here in a minute. But anyway, I can help the teacher, or help their students, to use technology into their classroom in, in an innovative way. And then I do lead a Vanguard team, which is made up of 10 teachers. Most of these teachers are three-year-plus teachers in our district, who are just part of a team that kind of helps lead the initiative with iPads as well throughout the whole school. There are 10 teachers right now. We meet in the summer, probably like two or three days, we meet in the summer, and we kind of just talk about our goals for the staff. And then they do help with PD days. So we do, this year, we have an hour during PD days. And in the, in the hour, we kind of talk about apps that can be used for creativity, or classroom management apps they can use that can help them out in their classroom. And some other thing that, one other thing that I do with teachers is I just help teachers with the new and existing program ideas. You know, for, for Kelly, the school store and things like that, she will kind of bounce ideas off of me. And we'll kind of, I'll give her some ideas, or she'll ask me what I think about that. Or just in the elementary, we do a lot of collaborate, collaborative projects with the high school and middle school and elementary. So a lot of the times, I'm not really in the role, but I might pair them up with, we've done a lot of stuff with library management specialists, Mrs. Vandell. So I might pair them up and help guide them in that project. Because we are so very fortunate to all be in the same building. We can kind of work through that together. And that's another way that I help teachers. I also teach SWAT class, they're called the SWAT team, which stands for... You're ahead of me, you got to go back. Okay, no, you're good. So SWAT stands for Students Working to Advance Technology. Basically, what they do is they help with any minimal iPad issues that maybe I can't get to. Like if I'm meeting with a teacher, and I have, I have a teacher in class that, because iPad's not working properly, I can send one of my SWAT kids out, and they can hopefully fix the iPad. I have nine this year, last year I had three, then I have nine. And I have them from like 10:30 on to about 1:30, maybe one or two per hour. But kind of the reason behind growing that is because we have tried to alleviate some teacher work. And what I mean, teacher work is, they've been creating a lot of videos in the elementary. Last year, we did the Planet video with first grade. We did the kindergarten weather video. So teachers, we come and have these great ideas, but teachers don't have time to put those videos together. So that's where SWAT comes in. They'll film the videos, and they will put the final touches on the videos, and then they'll give it back to the teacher, and the teachers will share it out. We've also made the eighth-grade promotion video last year. So they do a lot of creating for teachers. Today, another example is, they went down and helped second-grade students with a keynote. So we have a first-year teacher who is, who just needed some extra hands, because second grade is a huge class. So they went down, and they just kind of helped students navigate through the keynote that the teacher assigned for them. And then any other way the students can help alleviate some, some technology for the teacher. It's kind of what the SWAT kids do. All right, so success, 100% of our staff are Apple teachers. So we have to have a percent of teachers that are Apple teachers, as in Apple Distinguished Schools certification. So what we do is during that new teacher training, we kind of walk through that. So what an Apple teacher is, they just have to go through some iPad training, and they become Apple teachers. I, I feel like teachers are more prepared to use technology in our school. I think the last couple of years, I feel like, because I've been allowed by admin to, to kind of have them during the school day for a couple of hours, I think that's really propelled a lot of teachers to use more tech, use technology in a meaningful way, and to just help them be more comfortable with the technology. And I really think it also helps them think outside the box of what we, what we can do next with the iPad, or with just collaboration in our buildings. And then the last thing, if you'll hit the button. The last thing is, we were notified that we are Apple Distinguished for the third time in a row. So we are Apple Distinguished until 2025. So that is a huge success for our whole school. So a little bit about that is, the I-Gro committee sent in the certification. So Mr. Turgent wanted, wanted me to show the certification, or show what we put together to the board. I don't know if you, in the past, we've had to write this 35, 40-page book. Like, it was a huge task. And the I-Gro committee has worked with that. This year, they changed it to two pages, two pages only. So it really changed. The good thing is, we were able to embed as many videos as we wanted. So that's kind of where we were able to highlight our school. Do you have that on you?
I do, but my laptop's about to die.
Gosh.
I know.
So do you want me to airdrop it to your iPad? Or do you want me to just, I'll just airdrop it to your iPad?
Okay.
Will that work?
Yeah.
I'll just tell you what to click on in just a minute too, so we can. Okay, so this is the two-pager that the I-Gro committee worked on, we come up with. So we were told for the certification that we had to focus on our school today, which is kind of what you see. We had to just talk about the vision of our school, and the learning, and the success, and what's next. So we had to compile all this information into a two-page document. Like I said, the good thing was, we couldn't create as many videos, and it can be as long as we wanted them to be. So in a minute, Mr. Turgent's going to airdrop this, or email this out to you. Because it is amazing stuff that our kids have done. We interviewed a lot of students. So probably about roughly combined over 35 minutes of videos that we created. But I wanted to show you one, just to show you an example of how the I-Gro committee put everything together. If you will click on this sprout right here. Click on this sprout, this is the elementary video. And we're going to.
My, the remote's up there.
We have been planting watermelons. And we took them out to the greenhouse. And they are going to be in there until the first day of summer school. On the first day of summer school, where, when we have conservation, we are going to go look at them. And if they are big enough to be planted in the garden beds, you go take them over there, and each person will plant them in the garden bed. And throughout summer school, we will check on them every conservation time.
A plant needs food, water, sunlight, dirt. We took pictures of the stem, the seeds, and the leaves. We set them on our iPads. And, and you know, we, we put what goes first to, to the beginning to the end.
In knowledge, it's where, or you read books, and we were on insects. And we had this activity, colored a background, and cut out a bee and colored it, and went on keynote, and took small pictures of small distant moose, and showing it, trying to find the best nectar.
We went on safari, found some facts about the War of 1812. Then we wrote them on paper, then we made flashcards of them. Then we went in the green screen room and.
We are researching the Battle of Baltimore.
Americans have thousands of ships.
He is good.
My favorite thing was at Makerspace was Spiritborn, because we got to, we got to pick if we want to either drag it, make, code it to go left, right, or up and down.
Randoms, we make stuff out of like, I would say like out of just the randomest stuff to make something really cool. Probably a popsicle bridge.
Chris tries writing ones too, because he used to have his own.
So what's happening is skating, and then he jumps.
So we did a fun wizard about making hot chocolate, and how we did that advertisement. We recorded ourselves on our iPads. That recording told us when it was, what we were going to. That recording told us when it was, what we were gonna sell.
Our first ukulele class, Mr. Turgeon came in and helped us and like told us about all the different instruments that were close to our ukuleles. And Miss Henry helped us get him started. We're passing belts and everything and reading our iPads to tune our ukuleles.
We were learning about goddesses and we made our own myths. We used pages to create our myths. We wrote our own stories for our myths, we entered in pictures, or we got to draw our pictures.
And we reenacted a scene from a book we read. Uh, we used the green screen app. So there are like three layers in our app. And we put, uh, we put a background on the first layer. And then on the next layer, we had our video. And then on the very last layer, we had our props that we used. And we also used this website called remove dot B G. And that's where you could like renew, remove the background. Uh, I liked that we got to like just kind of act it out and have fun with it because I like acting a lot.
Because we were learning about sound and we made a video. Our materials were tape, brush markers, rubber bands, cereal bobs, and paper.
Yeah, for the podcast, we use GarageBand. After we read the book, we had to say our opinion on whether or not, not quoted was the good or the bad guy. And I've used, I've used Paint X because it's a really good drawing app.
Act, net. And, can. At. And.
We go back to the two-pager really fast for, and. So that was the elementary. So Mr. Turgeon hopefully airdropped to the, or he will, airdrop you the two-pager. And all the sprouts have links. So the sprouts go along with our I-Gro vision. All the sprouts have links, you don't see them, but you can click on them. And then anything that's underlined, also, this one has a link too. Anything that's underlined has a link that will take you to a video, our I-Gro website. These, all these individual sprouts have videos that we've linked in. And what we did was we just showcased our school. So you've seen the elementary video, we have one for high school, we have one for collaboration. We do a lot of collaboration. And then Transform Learning, and then Success. Success, we interviewed other, like, we interviewed Perez, we interviewed Kitchen Staff. We interviewed everyone from our school to showcase who we are and what we do well. So this was a two-pager. And I just wanted to present that to you guys. And we should be getting our banner and our plaque soon for Apple Distinguished. And then Mr. Turgeon will let you know when that's gonna happen because we're gonna have a celebration.
Very good.
Wonderful. It's sad because I can look at that elementary and see those students can do more than I can.
Take a training session. I need to.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Don't forget to airdrop it to them. Okay, we'll move on to bus routes.
Let me see if I can get the.
Oh, we have to approve the, yes.
I don't know if I can get, oh, I just need to quit sharing. I'm like, where'd they go? You guys still there?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The motion to approve the programs and service evaluation reports.
Seven.
Second.
I think, I think there's a question. Andrew has a question, he's been having, he's having it unmuted.
Okay, well, I'm having technical difficulties. My laptop died, so I'll see if I can unmute him from.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
That was not on purpose either.
Mm-hmm, I'm sure.
So did you have a question or are you just unmuted?
No, nope, not now, I had one about thirty minutes ago, but it was, so we'll get back to it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so all in favor of the evaluation reports?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both motion carries. Now we will move on to bus routes.
Um, this is something that we do every year. It's required that we approve our bus routes. We do a preliminary approval at the beginning of the year. And then at the end of the year, we finalize it and give some more updated numbers. But I do want to draw attention to it this year. We still have nine routes. And we've got a, we've got a couple routes, three routes that have a lot of kids. Dean's route has a lot of kids. The fortunate thing there is his kids are all pretty little. So it still leaves a lot of room on the bus. Rhonda and Tyler's routes obviously have more kids. But they're varying ages. So if we ever get to a point where we can hire some bus drivers, we might hire some additional so we can split up those routes and maybe reduce some of the discipline problems. So that's my hopes, we get this site certified as a training site. We, I think we have some interest out there, they just need trained. So we're working on it, hopefully we can make some progress there.
Any questions? I maintain a motion to approve the bus route that was presented.
Seven. Second.
All in favor? Both motion carries. District Assessment Plan.
Right. Another mandatory item must be in place for the year. Year-over-year doesn't change a whole lot, but kind of the gist of the District Assessment Plan, there's, it's twofold. One, for the state-level testing, one for our local assessment. The state-level testing, grades three through eighth grade will be the map testing. And in those grades, they test math and E L A every single year and science in fifth and eighth grade. Then you get to high school, those are called the end-of-course exams. Or if you hear E O C, that's what that stands for. And they take four tests while they're in high school, mandatory to graduate, they have to complete them. That's in algebra, English two, government, and biology. They'll take that class, that test during that class. So there's not really an order to that, just they'll take it whenever they're in the actual class. That hasn't changed, nothing's changed on that end. On the local side, there, there has been some changes to that. The DESI's approved cert tests to be kindergarten screamers as well as our preschool screamers and kindergarten.
Readyness.
Thank you. And those tests are new this year. The bright, Brigance. Brigance, I don't obviously give the Brigance. But the Brigance test is what they use now, is we used to dial in the past for several years and that's been a transition. This year, it's in place and they've utilized that this year successfully. So outside of that, there hasn't been a lot of changes. The, we will still give the A C T to all juniors, that'll be online. One year, we had to catch up and did one on paper. And now we're back in that same flow of things where we're giving the A C T online. And outside of that, work keys as a senior. So really, those are all the state-level testing. Our local assessments, we're still providing high-ready in grades K through really tenth grade right now. So that's what our District Assessment Plan is for this year, not a lot of changes outside. Some DISH, DESI mandatory changes.
I was reading, and I wish I wrote it down, that the national level for the A C test, A C T test has dropped dramatically the last couple of years. And it's, it was predicted to be even lower this year. Have you heard?
Yes, and then you can see at our state level, and actually, Mr. Turgeon went to a conference where they talked about that state data pretty intensely just because of the amount of instructions we missed out on during COVID. And some schools are out of, out of school for over a year. You know, they had virtual learning, but they weren't in seats. So kind of, it's showing the ability to be in seat and being able in front of a highly qualified teacher, how that's kind of hard to replace. I mean, it is, you can't replace it. That's the most important factor for student success is having a great teacher in front of them on a daily basis. So we were talking about the A C T and the state testing, all those things are just coming up with what we already know, just the teacher, they're the most important factor in all this.
I'm shocked.
Yeah. We had a unique experience because we continued on, not as normal, but we were Zooming and we had everything kind of in place. So that was a nice one for us when thinking back on, it was tough, but we were about as well-prepared as you could be. And we didn't see the dips as, as much as others did.
Any other questions or comments? I maintain a motion to approve the District Assessment Plan. Seven.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
I move that we adjourn the regular session to go to the closed session for the purpose of considering the students under Section sixteen dot oh two one subsection six and fourteen R S M O, personnel under Section sixteen dot oh two one subsections three and thirteen R S M O.
This is you?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Devlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jansen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagerly?
Yes.
Mr. Rio?
Yes.
Mr. Peabody? Motion carries seven, zero.